Welcome you to this special city council meeting of January 4th. Madam Click, will you call roll?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gothol.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bonia is absent due to illness. Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
All right. So we have one item on the on the agenda for this special meeting. And I believe this, the title is Public Works Master Plan Consolidation Preliminary Review. And I believe we have a staff presentation.
And good evening. Let me share my screen here real quick. Can everybody see my screen?
Sure.
Let's see. Great. So, good evening. My name is Matt Zucca, Deputy Director of Public Works. And yeah, we were going to be talking tonight about Public Works Master Plans. The staff, I believe, gave a presentation in September of 2020 that went over broader array of master plans that are developed by different departments. And tonight we'll focus on pretty much just the Public Works Master Plans. Okay, so overview for the evening and the conversation is one, just a slide on on why infrastructure master plans are important to public works. We'll talk a little bit about the adopted Public Works Master Plans themselves. The some in progress and draft plans that we have right now. I will be going through also an effort that we have underway to consolidate a number of our master plans. This is being done in conjunction with the general plan update. And in particular, the circulation element for the general plan. And also talk a little bit on each individual plan to give council a sense of what's included. What are the cost implications of that actual plan and sort of the scope of them? And then close it out with where are we funding our capital projects at the moment? Look at sort of the most recent three years and sort of the revenue and funding allocations that we've done to implement capital projects. So the master plans for us, the the main thing is it does allow us to take long term infrastructure improvements and prioritize them and plan them, budget them. They're capital intensive and expensive, so this takes time to get the money. And it also helps document institutional knowledge that we have because of the time horizon of these projects. Sometimes we need these kinds of documents in order to just transition through staff. We have plans that are in place right now that are 20, 20 years old. And that's, that's, you know, could be a career for somebody. So the documentation is key for us. Often also, plans need to be part of or projects need to be part of an adopted master plan in order to qualify for funding opportunities. So that isn't also, especially on the transportation side, where we rely on a lot of grant funding to realize those projects, that is important. One thing I do want to point out, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, is that the master plans aren't comprehensive in terms of documenting everything that Public Works does. We have a number of other types of projects that just never see or don't go into those kinds of master plans. But an example right now is that we're improving the Central, Central Park Garage. That is a structural, structural retrofit and on the order of a million dollars. But a project like that came about from identifying a need and a deficiency, not because it was in a, in a, in a master plan or in a document like that. And the other thing I want to say is that not just because a project is in a master plan, doesn't mean that it's obviously going to get funded. We have a lot of competing needs and the master plans are really identifying the needs on different segments of infrastructure that we have. So as we go forward and we implement, we are constantly going back and forth between the different plans to try to identify which projects should get funded and based on the priorities that we have with the city. A quick overview of the plans themselves. This is just the list and I'll go through each one of these in a little bit of detail. These are the adopted plans along with the date of adoption. So the Bicycle Master Plan, Council recall, was a 2020 document preceded shortly by the Green Infrastructure Plan. These plans go back to the ones that, you know, we're actively working on to 2002 with the flood master plan, flood management master plan. That actually identified the current North Shoreview flood improvement projects. It's actually in construction right now. So 20 years later, roughly, that master plan has a project that's coming to fruition. I'm not going to be talking about the Clean Water Program tonight. I think that is something that council has heard a lot separately. And with the other ones, we will definitely be going over. Some of the in progress or draft master plans. The first three are in progress right now. The Traffic Signal Master Plan is actually covering all of our traffic signals within the city, our communications between the signals and how that infrastructure will look like. There is a Sustainable Streets Master Plan also. That is actually a CCG effort. They are, it's in public draft, public comment right now, and it's estimated to be completed this year as well. The, we call it the Todd Pap Transit Oriented Pedestrian Access Plan is a plan that we got grant funding for. And that is to look at the actual pedestrian path of travel within a half a mile high quality transit. So really the TOD areas. The other two, the Hillsdale Transit Center Plan and the San Mateo Sustainable Streets Plan, I'll talk a little bit more about in detail, but those have been sort of reviewed, but not formally adopted. Our current consolidation efforts. This is being done in conjunction with CDD Community Development as part of the general plan update. So we're going to be developing a complete streets master plan that will combine the the list there. So the the two that are in development right now, the Todd Pap or the Transit Oriented Pedestrian Access Plan, the Sustainable Streets Master Plan being done by CCG, as well as consolidating with the Bicycle Master Plan, the Green Infrastructure, San Mateo Sustainable Streets Plan and the Pedestrian Master Plan. This is a statutory requirement when we update the general plan to have a complete streets plan. And so that is an effort that we're actually actively seeking grant funding for at the moment. And it will be done in parallel with with the development of the circulation element of the general plan. So expect to see a lot from us in the coming year or so, two years, as the circulation element is developed. And as these plans get updated and refreshed. So there'll be some extensive public engagement and council coordination along with that. Going through the plans sort of briefly on an individual basis, the Bicycle Master Plan was the most recent one. It provides the bicycle and micro mobility framework for the city, policy recommendations and future programs. Council did receive several comments, I believe, in response to this, in preparation for this meeting on the Rapid Implementation Network. That is a series of projects can be implemented very quickly with paint and delineators with an estimated cost of around $4 million. However, the full proposed bicycle network, which is citywide, has a range between 21 and 33 million, depending upon the level of build out with a quick build being on the cheaper end. Just for comparison, the high priority projects between 7.2 and 11 million. Again, looking at the range between a quick build and full build out in that range. Green Infrastructure Plan is required by our municipal regional stormwater permit. Specific goals there are to identify priorities for GI throughout the city targets and then establish a process for tracking and mapping. The interesting thing about the GI Master Plan is that it is not one that identifies projects per se and and scopes them and gives us budgets and estimates, rather identifies areas of opportunity where we can have highly effective GI. So the figure on the right shows high opportunity areas. And this helps inform staff when we're working with developers and when we're doing our own street projects as to areas where we really want to be taking advantage of GI when we can and incorporating them into project design. So it's, it's more an opportunistic plan than it is an actual listing or identification of projects. The Hillsdale Center Transit, Hillsdale Transit Center Plan, excuse me, is the plan that outlines sort of what the future of the Caltrain station would look like. It's, it has both a baseline phase, which is where we are right now, is getting through the track realignment and the grade set effectively. And then future phases that would include accommodating high speed rail, purchasing of two parcels and then construction of a parking structure. The cost in 2017 dollars was between 50 and 55 million, depending upon which option was selected. That cost does exclude the property acquisition. And plan predates me, but my understanding is it was left in the draft phase pending implementation of the baseline so that we would have more resolution on high speed rail and some of the other items that were necessary before we finalized it. The Long Term Trash Management Plan, this is another requirement from our municipal regional permit. It did establish and looked at all of our trash management areas within the city and tried to identify how are we going to reach our 100% by 2022 trash reduction mandate. This plan also identified projects in each of these trash management areas, but it didn't develop cost per se. With that being said, because the the trash capture is funded out of solid waste, the projects that are currently contemplated are fully funded. But we do have a new municipal regional permit that's coming out in January, the administrative draft. And we expect that while they're going to give us more time likely till 2025 to reach the 100% objective, they are going to make reaching that objective more difficult. So we'll see how that actually shakes out in terms of whether additional trash capture is required. The Sustainable Streets Master Plan, this is another master plan that didn't really go down to the project level. It did identify some, North San Mateo Drive is one of them that's currently implementing implementation and construction right now. It does combine some complete streets and green streets elements, but it is more of a policy level document than it is a master plan that comes out with a comprehensive list of projects. It gives us really a good guide for implementation of street improvements throughout the city. The Corporation Yard Master Plan, this was from 2013 and established what the courtyard would look like at a wastewater treatment plant. And if council recalls, that was a $40, $40 million estimated cost back in 2013. The wastewater treatment plant needed the land that was originally earmarked for the courtyard. So we will be updating the master plan to look at its current location and what kind of reconfiguration might fit in the in the footprint that we have right now. Back in, I believe it was around 2018, council reapproved, approved rezoning the current plan to allow us to keep it in its current location. The Pedestrian Master Plan is from 2012. This was actually quite a comprehensive one, a long list of projects. It does provide a good vision for the strategy of the pedestrian realm and also includes several larger guidelines and larger projects such as the Greenway Pedestrian Quarter Network. That's a series of connecting sidewalks throughout the city that would help improve the pedestrian experience within the city. The one thing to note about this one is the costs that are included in it, I think, are an underestimation of the actual cost of implementation. And it's a good planning level document. It does identify a long, long list of of projects that are necessary, but I haven't included the cost in the slide for that reason. The Storm Dream Master Plan from 2004, this is mostly for what we call the interior flooding or the the pipes, pipes and pumps parts of it within the city. So more west of 101 than anything else. And it did include basically everything except for pipes in poor condition. So there was no condition assessment done with it, and it doesn't address the Marina Lagoon. So with that, there was a total of around $56 million in high, medium and low priority projects that's in today dollars escalated. We are, I want to point out, currently working with the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission on stormwater funding options. We presented to them in December, I believe it was, and we'll be back again in February with a report to evaluate both our stormwater capital and maintenance needs as well as our Marina Lagoon capital and maintenance needs. And we anticipate bringing those findings back to council in the second quarter of 2021. So that funding analysis will also incorporate the findings and the projects that are identified in the master plan. The Flood Management Strategies, this is the document that I referred to earlier, and this is more of the bay side of flooding. It really looked at how are, it's not a sea level rise per se, but how is the bay influencing flooding? And it identified the actual North Shoreview flood improvements for the first time. There is some overlap between this master plan as done in 2002, just two years before the other one. So I didn't list the actual project list and costs here because it would be somewhat double counting. There are some are in both plans, but this was more focused on flooding near the bay than anything else. So from a project cost standpoint, what each of these master plans identifies, the table on the right there gives the range in the in the plan itself. Some of them, again, as I said earlier, don't necessarily have a list of projects or if they have projects, they don't necessarily have detailed costs. And so it's not really possible to sum up. Clearly, the GI infrastructure plan has got a lot of potential costs, but it's a matter of identifying and doing those projects at the appropriate time. And some of those projects actually might be done by developers as when they redevelop their their property. So this sort of represents the ones that have been identified. I tossed in at the bottom, a couple of big items that we have going on right now in the pavement management program that is currently funded at around $4.5 million a year or over 10 year period of time would be around $45 million. And then the Marina Lagoon, which is got a couple of dredging options between eight and 80 million dollars, depending upon the disposal characteristics or the sediment characteristics and the disposal requirements for any dredging material that we remove from that lagoon. Again, we'll be back to council with more information on the lagoon itself and some of those options here in the near future. But just for comparison purposes and and to highlight the point about how some of our projects, but not all are in the master plans, I thought I'd toss those in there. Current funding and budgeting. So with that being said, where are we spending our money right now in in Public Works? When it comes to, other than the Clean Water Program, some of, some of the projects or some of the areas of infrastructure that might be covered by by these master plans? And this is a three year snapshot, if you will. So it's 2019, 20, 2021, and the proposed 2122 budget. And we have projects right now that are in construction that are on here. The intention of doing this is sort of recent decisions about where funding is going more than anything else and providing a three year window of of that thought. There is discretionary funding, as you can see, on the order of 12.9 million over this period of time from the general fund. Other sources of funding are more restricted or constrained with Measure S and Measure W and gas tax money having actual and TIF, the traffic impact, be having constraints on how we can use that money. And there was a significant $49 million investment in streets. This is a smooth street program as well as the North Shoreview Flood Improvement Project. So that is a significant one time, basically cash infusion. How does that money by fund then get distributed across the different types of projects that Public Works works on? So this is the same, same three year period of time. And as you can see, we spend a lot of money on paving. We spend a lot of money this year on stormwater. The brown color represents this one time infusion of funds that you saw from the previous slide. So when we, when we take that out, this is more what the still discretionary, but what the distribution looks like with a better sense of scale. We do have general fund money as an orange. And then the other types of funding are in the different colors. I will say again, trash over here in the in pink is the one project category here that is funded by solid waste and right now, based on the program projects, is actually fully funded. The rest, including paving, which we're spending a lot of money on right now. We, you're going to hear back from staff in second next study session, but we definitely think that over the long term, our current funding levels are are good, but they're not going to be adequate to keep us out of no more failed streets. We have a smooth streets program and we have a pavement management program, and we'll be bringing back more information on that. So while that bar is high, I think it's fair to say that the projects across the board, other than trash, depending on the goals that we set for for them, there, there's definitely room for more and sort of the case in what we do. So our process every year is that we review the, our plans and identify needs. It starts early fall every year. We will basically develop charters for new projects. And those are discussed internally within our, within Public Works and with staff. And we evaluate the new and existing projects and priorities. So we go back to the goals, the the council priorities that we've been given and look at how we're spreading the money around. That, that budgeting process then goes through and we'll try to prioritize those, allocate funds based on those priorities and then prepare the annual CIP budget. So the the previous three year snapshot that I was providing, that's the process that we followed every single year in order to come up with those, those budgets and how we're actually spending money at the moment. And then finally, in summary, obviously, for for Public Works, master plans are important to document the needs and establish appropriate fees and really serve again as a reference for staff. Those are critical, but the, not all the projects are in the master plans. We do have other, other projects that come up or they're just aren't appropriate to be documented in that kind of a format. The time horizon on these is decades. We, as I highlighted with the North Shoreview, that that master plan came out in 2002. So they really are looking at a long term horizon. And bottom line is, given the previous slides and the funding, implementation of each plan is affected by the implementation of others. So ultimately, if we had all the money, we could get them all done, but one necessarily affects the others. And finally, you know, the, we do have a fairly major consolidation effort that's going to be underway. So several of those plans and very important ones are going to be revisited and consolidated into one sort of guiding document that is going to really be more transportation related in support of the circulation element for the upcoming general plan update. So with that, thank you very much for your time. It's a, a lot of, a lot of information that I didn't go over because of these master plans are quite long. And hopefully that was at least a snapshot of what we have in the books, no pun intended, for from public works perspective.
Thank you, Matt, for going over all that information. Before we, I open this up to questions from council, I just wanted to give a quick reminder that this, of course, is a virtual meeting. And if you'd like to participate, you have two ways of doing so. The first way is, of course, by raising your hand on this Zoom. And the second way is to phone in. And that could be done by calling the number 408-638-0968. And when the item of interest that you'd like to speak comes up, you press nine, star nine, excuse me, to raise your hand. And when called upon, you press star six to unmute. With that, I'd like to see if there's any questions from council. Councilmember Gothols.
Matt, thanks very much for that great presentation. You mentioned that there's just not enough money to keep the pavement management going. Is that mostly due to reduced funds from the gas tax? Are we seeing less and less of that from the state?
No, I, so far the projections aren't that. It's that costs are more than we expected. So the $4.5 million funding has been going on for quite a number of years. And I think back when that was originally programmed in, since then, just the cost of construction has gone up. So when we look at what does it take to keep all of our good and very good streets in the good and very good category? That's going to be roughly around 4.5 to 5 million. What, what that wouldn't cover, and again, you'll get more information on this in the next study session, but what that probably doesn't cover is keeping the ones that are in the poor condition and getting those back up into good and very good, right? So we're dealing right now with the brackets. We've got the failed streets program and we've got the good and very good. But what, but the funding is, we can take all that money and spend it on the, it's really a matter of where you put it, right? So it's hard to give you one answer. It's like I can take all the money that we're spending on the good and very good and spend it on the poor, but we're then missing opportunities. Because the one thing about paving is if we don't catch it at the right time, it just gets more and more expensive, not just because costs go up, but because if it's, the further the paving or a street decays, the more expensive it is to get it back up to the, the good condition, right? So in, in a, in a good category, it might cost us $200,000 a mile. If we let that go, we let that slip, it could cost us $2 million a mile. Or if it gets to fail, it costs us $5 million a mile. And so it really is important to catch it at the right time. So long answer to a very short question, apologize.
No, that's, that's good. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the point you're making, which is that it's going to cost more than we want. But once we get rid of all the failed streets, it'll cost less than it does right now.
That is fair to say, yes.
Okay. Can you go back to your slide that discusses downtown grade separations?
Yes. Give me a second. This one?
Yes, this is, I don't think you're, well, this is Hillsdale. I'm talking about downtown.
Downtown with. Give me a second.
I think it might be a trick question for you.
I'm thinking, I'm not sure I had a slide on downtown grade sets.
We're going to find that money too, aren't we?
I don't have a master plan on that.
We better, we better work on that master plan then.
Little, little slow on the trick questions tonight.
I, I really want to thank you for the presentation. I don't want to ask any more questions. I think that this presentation reflects our values. We're putting our money in the right places. I have more comments for later. I just wanted to ask those few questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more council questions from council? Councilmember Pappen.
I just had a couple of quick questions. Can you go back to the two slides towards the end there that dealt with funding?
Let me.
I think it was the third to the last and the fourth to the last slide.
So there was, yes, this one without the bond funds and then this one with the bond funds.
Okay, so the bond funds, that's coming from which bond? I'm just trying to.
That we, that was a $50 million street and flood bond that I believe is being funded by Measure S. And that's going towards smooth streets and the North Shoreview Flood Improvement. So it's specifically allocated to those two projects.
Okay, that's what I thought. So then we'll go to the next slide.
Okay.
And then I just didn't see in there where we were talking about grant money. And, and I just.
Yeah.
Kind of focus on, I know it's unreliable and it's difficult to chart, but I think it's important that we.
Yeah, this doesn't, this isn't an exhaustive list of every potential source of funding. So like, for example, parking in Lou isn't in here, but it's such a restricted fund source that I didn't include that item as a, as a funding measure. We do get grant funding. It is difficult to, to program in. So it's less about a decision that we're making, right? And so the purpose of this slide is really like, where are we making our decisions about what to fund? When we go for a grant, we know the project, we identify the project, the project's in a plan. It's already been approved. So we're then making that actually happen. The intent with this was some of these are discretionary, some of them are restricted. But yeah, when we talk about the priorities and what we're, where we're spending our money, that was what I was trying to accomplish with this slide, less about it being comprehensively every place we're spending dollars, if you will.
Got it. So two follow up questions. I'm staying on the grant topic. I'd just like to get a read on what you think we spend resource wise in applying, locating and applying for grants. And then also, you don't have to answer tonight, but, and then also, what is the percentage of of grant money that does fund some of these projects? Like in particular, paving is of interest to me and to many of our residents. So I'd just like to know how much we spend resource wise to identify and obtain funds? And then what is the percentage that goes into certain projects, including, not least of which is the paving?
Yeah, and I can bring more specifics back on like what grants we've gotten and what they've been applied towards. I can't answer the percentages tonight. We can definitely bring that back when we talk about paving next time. I would say that we're fairly, we're judicious in how we go after grants. So we don't like to waste staff time, obviously. The Todd Pap, for example, was a recent grant application. And it was awarded, I believe, by the TA on the order of over $100,000. And that was a, a plan for, that that was then going to turn into projects, right? For the projects themselves, the, we don't really find that paving is something people are awarding grants for, at least at the moment. Maybe something will come out of the new administration or something will come out of some, something that we're funding is available. But in terms of just straight up grant applications, really where we're seeing more of that or where I've seen more of that since working for San Mateo has been in either preparing a plan or we've been successful in the bike and ped realm. I think we actually have some good conversations going on right now with MTC and Sue Ellen's on board tonight too. She can talk more specifically about this if we have more questions on that topic. But going after funding the Rapid Implementation Network, for example, we really are looking at that as being a key way of, or at least portions of it, right? Of the Bicycle Master Plan. Those are key projects where we're finding grant funding is more available because it's accomplishing multiple things. It's not just infrastructure, but it's getting people out of cars, it's moving them on the bikes. It's a broader, higher, maybe loftier goals and just straight up paving. So that's where we're seeing the traction, I would say, and or we're seeing the most opportunities. In terms of the amount of time, I would say that Sue Ellen probably says she spends a fair amount of time applying for and working on grants. With that being said, she's also been very successful doing it. So it's sort of a self feeding cycle. When you're successful at it, you want to keep applying for them. So out of all of this, I would say that the bike ped realm is probably where we've seen the, the greatest opportunity for grants. But if you would like more information on where we've spent, what projects have. Um, but if you would like more information on where we've spent, what projects have specifically been funded and what grants we've gotten, we could certainly bring that back.
No, it's okay. I'm just, you know, focused on where we get more money.
Yeah.
As we all are.
And, and we are looking at a grant application, uh, through, uh, for consolidating the, um, the master plans under the circulation element as well. So that process is in place right now, and that should go to fund, uh, the vast majority, hopefully of that consolidation effort. Uh, and again, because it's transportation related, um, and, and the one thing I do want to say too is that, uh, that consolidation effort is going to be dovetailed with the same information that council's receiving with respect to traffic safety. Uh, and that's the presentation, I think, that you've seen from Bethany Lopez and from PD. So when that consolidation happens, now we're having traffic, bike, ped into a master plan where that consolidation will then overlay that same traffic safety analysis. And we'll now be looking at, you know, prioritizing projects now with a safety component too. So in our preliminary conversations with some of the people that are providing grants, they've been fairly interested. I don't want to say excited. That would be good. It may be a little bit too, uh, presumptuous. But interested in that kind of a, an effort where we can have a consolidated plan with a safety element that is helping prioritize it. Um, and, and actually hopefully developing projects that are going to have a tangible safety benefit as well.
Excellent. Sounds good. Uh, the only other thing I would say is a comment, not a question, but it deals with the green streets and, and getting developer money for that. When projects come along, I know you're zeroed in on it and I I remain focused on it as well. Thank you. That, that was excellent. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Lee. I think you might be on mute.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation and, um, and I really appreciate the amount of work that has gone into all the planning. And I, I actually have a question about sort of the CIP process, planning process as a, as a whole. And I'm, I'm curious, you know, when we look at like the, the advantages of folding in and consolidating efforts through the general plan process, um, from a circulation and safety perspective, I'm, I'm curious, like, do you think that there are other potential consolidation opportunities where we can wed, um, wed interests in, um, in our facilities, master planning and our, um, you know, uh, along with our public works, master planning, along with our arena and housing goals, like that there are, there are many competing, um, needs in, you know, in the city. And, and I know that we need to look at this, you know, in a singular way, but also in, you know, in, in a global and comprehensive way. And so I'm curious to hear, you know, as you kind of pan out, um, from just like this, you know, the CIP process, and we look forward to the general plan, um, where do you see us, you know, thinking, you know, broadening our design thinking opportunities? Um, and, and, you know, how can we do long range planning, keeping in, in balance all of the various competing needs? Knowing that we have constrained funding and constrained land.
Right. Now, it's, it's, uh, I, I wish I had an answer to that question. It's a great question. Um, I can say that the, uh, we have, to a certain extent, the master plans themselves get prepared because there are different types of expertise that go into different analyses. So the same people that do a stormwater master plan aren't capable, for example, of doing a facilities master plan. Uh, they're just, they're different consulting firms. Uh, so when we look at consolidation or looking at, uh, if we look at the corporation yard, for example, uh, that is a new city facility. Is there other, other, we, we, there's the engineering, what is, what is public works need? And then there is, how can we make it happen? Um, so yeah, I think that we, we're going to have to be creative on a lot of these things because there's not money to be had, uh, everywhere to fund them all. Um, I, I don't know that there's much more I can add than that. Certainly, when we look at, uh, uh, the GI plan, we are looking at policies that we can have developers fund, for example. And we did actually request an amendment municipal code to say that a new development has to treat 75% of its frontage with GI if it comes in. And so we do try to get creative with that. Um, there was a situation in a particular project that I was involved in when I actually first joined San Mateo where we, a development was going in and a, and a transportation area, uh, TOD area. But the project wasn't necessarily improving anything on the pedestrian path to travel. But that project is marketed basically because of its proximity to transit. So we developed the whole Todd Pass, Todd now Todd Pap project, uh, the transit oriented pedestrian prep plan to specifically identify a list of projects and improvements that we could then say, hey, if you're bringing your development into San Mateo, here's what we need the TOD area to look like for the pedestrian path to travel. We can either incorporate it into the TIF, we can do some other form of, of funding, but in the absence of that plan, we can't do any of that. All we can do is ask the developer and hold our hand out and say, please. So really that plan, that plan is allowing us to do other things and maybe update the TIF to include those projects. Um, and to focus it in particular in the TOD area. So we can get creative that way. Um, but it's, it's not an easy problem to solve by any stretch of imagination.
Yeah, it's, well, I think, I think, you know, to hear you say that we need to be creative, we need to be start thinking out of the box. Um, I think that, that, you know, that's a really important takeaway from, from my perspective. And so my question then is how do we empower that to happen, right? At the top of, well, how do we put that at the center of, of our strategy and approach? So that's, you know, that's kind of, you know, as I, as an overarching, you know, you know, lead thought here is, you know, we, we have bigger problems than, um, than we have land for, than we have, um, funding for. So how do we make sure that the creative creativity and innovation is at the center, um, of our solutions for the long range? And, and your input on terms of how we accomplish that and how we can support that as a council and policy is, you know, is really valuable.
I, I think just, I mean, from my perspective, that would be really, um, you know, getting direction from a majority of council to, to go in that direction. I, I think the one, the one facility that, that pops into mind that I think is going to be the, the most challenging is, is what to do with a corporation yard. Um, as you, as you note, we don't have other land to move to. It is a good location for a corporation yard, given its central location in the city, but it's also a, a desirable location for other uses, um, you know, because of its, its proximity to the, uh, to, to Caltrain. I, I mean, at this point, a master plan is just a master plan for that facility because we simply don't have the, the funds to, uh, to, to do anything with it. So I, I do think if we, if we want to do something with a corporate, we are going to have to really think creatively. Um, and, you know, that could take a number of different forms. I mean, you know, if, and so if there's, I think, I think if there's a direction to, to do that, I think our next step would be to, to sort of hash through that, what that might look like and then bring it back to council. Um, what, you know, we, you know, brainstorming on kind of what, what creative ideas are out there. Um, and we really don't know. We, um, you know, we've, we've had interest in, in, in that property from developers, but they want it to develop. Um, and, and our problem has always been, we don't have anywhere to go. And so we, we really have to think about, could, is there a way to utilize that site and sort of get the best of both worlds?
Is that all your questions, council member Lee?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Um, great. I just had one question before we hand it over to public comment. You know, in the staff report, it's, it's, um, asking to us to receive this report, but also what I think is, was very important. It's saying that you want recommendations on establishing a, a process for prioritizing. And I guess I was, I was very curious, if we take a step back and look at the forest, um, do we, do you, or does staff have any recommendations as to how to begin getting our mind around prioritizing all these different things? It seems like it's going to be a very heavy lift. And I'm wondering, are there best practices of frameworks that other entities have used? And are there any examples? For example, looking at funding verse readiness versus not, um, looking at, uh, projects that could be implemented concurrently and things like that. I mean, I guess I'm looking for direction to help us not just look at each plan, but also how do we get to the end goal, which I think is prioritizing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from, from, uh, staff's perspective of public works, the, you know, part of the point of showing the funding and talking about our CIP budgeting process is to say that, you know, this is how we come before you with this information with the projects. Um, if we want to have conversations, that's one, one location. I think that we do have a really good opportunity to talk about prioritization when we go through the consolidation of the master plans into the complete streets document, because that's going to take what is really a fragmented series of master plans that really talk about transit and transportation and different modes and put it into one. So that will be a good opportunity because, um, between bike and ped and some of the other improvements, uh, whether it be bulb outs or, or, or whatnot. Um, those are all kind of around the same topic. Um, and, uh, uh, so from, from, from the near term perspective, I think that those are the, the, the key input points anyway, uh, coming up. And the longer term with the consolidation plan, because that is not going to be a short-term effort. Uh, in terms of it, where it becomes difficult is when you talk about, uh, funding a storm drain project versus a streets project, and how do we value those differently depending upon the priorities? And at, at a certain extent, that's a conversation to be had. Every time we're talking funding, uh, the other part of it is, you know, like I was trying to point out earlier on paving, is it costing the city any money by deferring one thing over the other? Uh, in the case of a sidewalk project, you defer sidewalk maintenance or you defer replacing a sidewalk. The sidewalk cost gets more expensive, but just because of inflation. When you defer paving, it becomes an actual increased cost. So uh, making sure that those trade-offs are made without understanding in mind. Um, but the bottom line is it's, it's going to be prior, you know, ongoing prioritization to make it all, uh, um, balance out.
So do you, do you anticipate being able to put together some sort of model that, that looks like if we want to, for something like street paving and things that are um, a little bit more straightforward, like this is the way we optimize taxpayers' dollars by, you know, doing a little bit of this, a little bit of that, or prioritizing this over that. Um, and then later on, is it going to be as simple as saying, what do we, what do we want to work on first and then put a one, two, three? I guess I'm looking for what you see as the actions that we're going to be needing to do in the future.
So for paving, it definitely is a model, like just looking at that in isolation, because we do actually, uh, we have 200 mi, center line miles of streets. So it's not, uh, we, we actually run a program called Street Saver to help us with that prioritization process. So within the paving component, it's already prioritized. Um, I don't think we have a model per se that's going to take a, a paving project side by side with a storm drain project, side by side with a sidewalk project and try to, um, come up with an algorithm that would prioritize between those. Uh, the process right now is really taking the, the council strategic objectives, and then we can translate those, those down into the project level. And then, um, review those projects and the ones that are being funded based upon those objectives. So for example, North Shoreview, Smooth Streets, those programs were council objectives. And then by, by through staffs, you know, through the effort, uh, of staff that have been funded and are now being, being implemented. But are we going to be able to do something that then puts all of them side by side? I don't know. I don't quite see that. Um, uh, it, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more complicated. So I think it really, from my perspective anyway, is more of an ongoing conversation with respect to council's objectives, right? And we can certainly be the, the technical, uh, people in that conversation.
Okay. All right. Is there any more council member Pappen?
So I, I just want to follow up a, a little bit on that questioning. So we're talking that what you might be looking for is perhaps some prioritizing within plans, but it's difficult to prioritize among plans. Is that right?
Um, almost the reverse, actually. Sorry. So, but within a plan, like an engineer can look at a storm drain master plan and say, this is a higher priority project because, uh, if you don't do it, it has a higher frequency of flooding. Uh, as compared to this other one, right? So there are kind of engineering technical criteria that relate to A, B, and C within a plan. Um, prioritizing between the highest priority storm drain project, for example, and the highest priority bicycle project, for example, is where it becomes difficult. And, um, we then are going, you know, we have our annual process, right? So at that point, it's like, is council more interested in funding storm drain rehab, or is council more interested in funding bike ped? Um, and, uh, that would be more the, I think, where we're, right now, that's what we're doing at the staff level when we present the budget, right? This is how we've interpreted the priorities that have been given to us. And then that's how the projects are going to get implemented. So, um, uh, but again, not all of the projects in the master plans, these master plans are a subset. So this is where it becomes difficult to your question earlier, uh, Mayor Rodriguez is, this is just a subset. So we have the smooth streets, there are other facilities projects. Uh, it, it is go, it does go outside of these plans. And so I, I think it's useful to start at the very abstract with what overall objectives are, uh, and then translate that down into, uh, for example, it could be, uh, whether it's peninsula, overpass, or whether it's, uh, uh, even landscaping on 92 and one, uh, and 82. Uh, there's a lot of other projects that are in our queue, um, that may or may not be getting discretionary funding. And as we see those, if that is being, that they're being spent in alignment with priorities and objectives, you know, that's where it becomes balancing out, uh, those kinds of, those kinds of efforts and those kinds of decisions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions from council before? Okay, uh, I'm going to open up public comment and Madam Clerk is gonna call on the attendees as they raise their hand. And we also have a new timer feature for the new year. So you'll be able to see exactly how much time you have as you're speaking.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting my hands ready on this. Bye.
No worries. We are innovating as a city.
Okay, the, uh, first speaker will be Adam Lorraine. Adam, you can unmute yourself now and give me one second to start the timer.
Sure, I'll just test audio.
The audio is working.
Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and start? I seem to have lost my timer. I'll go find it again.
No problem. I'll try to be brief. Thank you, city clerk. Happy New Year to city council and to staff. Uh, Adam Lorraine, speaking, uh, with my own personal opinions, despite being on the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. Um, I want to thank staff and council for exploring this tonight, uh, and just wanted as a, as a, you know, resident to throw in, uh, a cheer for some high level thinking from council, perhaps on, um, a timeline for at least the rapid implementation program and network, uh, within the bicycle master plan. So I think what we're, what I'm hearing today and, and what we're, you know, looking at is clearly we don't have money for everything. And there are lots of very important projects that we're looking at here. Um, and I see also that funding that, uh, you know, a, a lot of the funding we have right now is going toward smooth streets and other, other things. And the, the, the strategy right now, i- as it appears to me, seems to be to go for grants for the bike ped and, and put the other money where we can and in the high priority projects that we have. Um, but, and, and first of all, thanks to Sue Ellen for doing it. Um, we, we are seeing some successes as, as Matthew mentioned earlier. Um, but, uh, unfortunately, last year, the, the grant we applied for, for the rapid implementation network specifically, we didn't win. Um, so it, it seems that we're going to have to wait at least one more year before jumping into that, perhaps. Maybe I, I don't have that timeline right exactly, but I think the, the overall high level ask I have of, of council is to, is to perhaps just consider, um, by when we could like, by when would we like to have this done? And, uh, and, and by setting a, a timeline on it, getting a sense of like, if we can't get a grant over a number of years, for example, for this important work, uh, and, you know, for four to $5 billion, could we, uh, could we consider other ways of, of funding it? Be it from taking away from other projects or something, uh, if, if absolutely necessary. Or hopefully, as council member Lee mentioned, we can, uh, work together, residents, uh, private and public to, uh, think of other ways we might be able to fund this. But, uh, I just wanted to throw that out there. I realize there's not enough money for everything and everything's important. Thank you so much.
And next speaker is, uh, Christie Eggleser. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Christie Eggleser. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. That was really helpful and I'm glad that this conversation is happening. I think the, um, slide that showed the distribution of budget was so great to see, and it was really telling. And I would say as a constituent, I would not put paving as high on my priority list as it is in relation to everything else on the budget. I think if you stack all the other bars together, uh, it might equal what we're spending on paving, and that was just really astounding to me. Um, and I think it shows that, uh, the needs of cars are insatiable. I mean, uh, uh, as, uh, Mr. Zuka was explaining that if you delay a sidewalk improvement, um, it just inflation, but if you delay a paving project, uh, it just gets worse. And I think that, um, for me, that's telling us, telling me that we don't need to spend more money on paving, that we need to spend more money. For me, that's telling us, telling me that we don't need to spend more money on paving, that we need to spend more money. On ways to get people out of their cars and to use public transportation, bicycles, pedestrian. And as Adam was mentioning, I think doing the quick build is like. Where our priorities should be so that you have a network immediately that is safe. If you just have one big project kind of standalone, then people aren't going to get out of their cars and start riding their bikes. Because they can't run all their errands or do all the things that they want to do on their bikes or walk safely. To the grocery store, wherever it is that they're needing to go. So I think that quick build absolutely has to be the priority. And I think as far as getting grant money goes, I think that it often helps to have some. Matching funds so that the local government is putting in money and then it's matched by the grant. And if you're not putting in that local money, then you're not going to get the grant. And so I think that that's really important. And then finally, I would say that. Caltrans has recently done some quick build projects along ECR and Burlingame was one of the places where that was done. One of the intersections to do lead pedestrian interval signals. And I'm wondering how San Mateo can be on that list for Caltrans projects. And maybe if the council or staff has people that they know in Burlingame or other places where this was happening. If you could reach out to them and say, how can San Mateo get on this list? Because we know that El Camino in San Mateo is a high collision. Location and that's how Caltrans is making their priority list. And so I think that that's a quick build solution that can happen right away. But through Caltrans funding, so thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, I have no other speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, we do now. I'm sorry. Drew just raised his hand. Drew, I'm allowing you to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening there. I wasn't sure if this was a 50 person public session or just a few. So I wouldn't speak if there were 50 people and stuff. So sorry about that confusion at the end there. Two, two general comments. One is around the Hillsdale Transit Center that was brought up here. So I would think to a point on that one, well, that transit center plan needs, will need to be updated. It's not just, it comes before council and gets blessed. There was recently stuff on the north end around 28th and Bike Access. There's stuff, as you well know, for me on the south side. Hundreds of homes and about 100 multifamily complexes were impacted by the, the quarter to half mile move north. And so I think the transit center plan would just need to, I don't know if it needs to be quote redone, but it probably needs to be updated to account for. For just making sure the access is correctly captured. Because it doesn't get talked about a lot, but Hillsdale Gardens, which is just west of the mall is. You know, probably before Bay Meadows was the biggest TOD in the city of San Mateo. It's got like 900 apartments and it's right there. And it has actually been impacted with the move north. It has knocked some of the apartment buildings out of that distance and you've got the County of San Mateo Hospital also just south of Hillsdale Garden. So that's just an FYI, if that comes up in the future, probably needs to be updated. So getting to one that was missing. One of the council members mentioned downtown grade separations, like there's not a master plan yet for that. And tonight, in of itself, this meeting won't get created, but. There is a need to figure out stuff around downtown and grade separation. And it's a little bit of chicken and the egg because nothing's there, then we can't. We can't reserve land that's needed to make this happen. And because we don't reserve the land, it's going to make this more expensive and harder to do. So like later, there'll be this topic about surplusing, I think it's a Talbot's parking lot later. That, that location potentially could be valuable for a future south end of a relocated. New downtown kind of whole thing with station and stuff and getting grades separate and stuff. So I just think somehow that needs to get up on the radar to. It's a 20 year plan effort, probably, maybe even longer. That's what it took for Hillsdale. And to start, we got to make a little progress on that. We don't have to spend tons of money at this point. We can even leverage Palo Alto did a lot of work on this, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and leverage their costs and stuff. So I just would somehow bringing visibility to the downtown. Really north 92 to the city line grades up. Thank you.
And I see no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Would anybody like to begin with final comments? Is that? Councilmember Gothos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all the public speakers. I think everybody has the right idea. We all have our favorite projects that we want to get funded. And I think the reason we're talking about it tonight is because it's so complicated. This is one of the hardest issues for me to get my head around. And as a council member, it took years to understand why can't we do this and why can't we do that? And why aren't we working harder for these projects that we care about? And it's a very complicated answer. There are projects that we've already put money into that we will lose a lot of money and we don't want to lose that money. There are projects that we have to fund because there's specific buckets of money that are dedicated towards that type of funding. There are issues that will get worse faster. Paving is one of those. And so it will cost us more money if we don't make the investment now. These are all the reasons why we're talking about it now. The thing that was so, this is my main comment. The thing that was so refreshing to me was to see that our values are reflected in the projects that we're spending money on right now. To see that wastewater treatment plant and storm water management and paving are things that we really put money behind. And the thing that I want to point out to folks who are listening tonight and to the council is that. There's at least three or four examples in recent history of what we need to do in order to accomplish our goals. One is the 92 El Camino interchange. That took over 20 years. The, the funding from that came from the federal government. It was Congressman Lantos who actually set aside federal funds and we had to hold on to those dollars in order to get that project done. It took pulling money from several different pots, including. Including the federal FEMA loan in order to get the, the clean water program off the ground. In order to get the great separations at 25th, 28th, and 31st, we had to, for 20 years, we as a council had to, to be supportive of the project. Unanimously supportive. We had to get millions and millions of dollars from high speed rail in order to get it done. And it had to be shovel ready at the right moment. You see so many other cities that don't have great separation because they weren't ready at the time that they needed to be. So I can't stress enough to the average citizen how complicated this is. The things that we never get around to, we still work on by creating mandates. Matt referred to how we're trying to build our GI, our green infrastructure by mandating it as, as much as possible. So I really appreciate that we're trying to tackle this. I don't think there's any easy solution. I don't think it's something we can just steal from another city. I think we have to, to really get deep into it and know that there are going to be times. When maybe a project that isn't our top priority has to go first because it'll either cost more if we wait. Or the funding is available now or it's shovel ready and, and it has to go at the same time to something else. So it's complicated and I appreciate that. And I, I am most appreciative of the fact that our current funding reflects our values. So I wish we could fund everything. I know we can. This is a great process. So thank you, Matt, for the presentation and, and thank you for all the people who spoke on this topic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It looks like Councilmember Papin has her hand up.
Thank you. Matt, it was indeed a comprehensive. Presentation and. What it really boils down to and what this job and being an elected boils down to is to balance competing interests when there isn't enough money. We constantly, I want the public to be assured that we are constantly aware of. What the community's needs are and the community is very vocal about letting us know what those needs are. And the job entails balancing those needs. Primarily through a fiscal lens. And we do the best that we can and we will continue to do so through the creation of plans. So that's why I appreciate staff work on the creation of the plans and updating the plans so that they do reflect our priorities. And they do keep this city modernizing in many different ways, whether that's bike, pedestrian, storm water, wastewater treatment, all of those things. When you don't have enough money, it really comes down to balancing. And I want the public to rest assured, we'll continue to balance and we'll continue to try to be creative in how we find those funds. Whether it's with the help of the public sector when it comes to green infrastructure or whether it's through grant money that's out there. Aside from just our, our standard capital improvement funds and some of the discretionary funds in the general plan. So we'll keep working at it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I think that, you know, I'll echo what Councilmember Papin and Councilmember Godel said about, about the, the work that's gone into these plans so far. And them being a reflection of community need and, and how important it is to, to balance competing interests. When I think about. Land opportunities like, and, and infrastructure needs, like for example, the courtyard. One of the questions for me is, you know, how, how do we maximize the greatest public benefit? For our public land. And so for our city manager to raise the question about a land opportunity and in, and in infrastructure. Yeah, and operational capacity need that is, that is central to, to the functioning of our city. I, I think that that's worth exploring and, and I really do want to underscore the point. That Matthew was making that we need to, we need to stay the course in aligning our values and our plans. And also we need to apply a creative lens and, and allow ourselves the, the opportunity to explore innovative solutions. That might not have, have come before us because we haven't made that approach, the, the focus. And so I'm very interested in, you know, in the potential of looking at the courtyard. And, and seeing, you know, what are the possibilities there? It is a highly underutilized space with a lot of needs. And it's also a transit oriented location. And, and I think that, you know, if the council can tackle something really important that could have, you know, decades and, you know, really. Really long standing implications for the city and how it gets built out. I think that that's a really great opportunity for this council to tackle this questioning, posing the question to ourselves and to the community. What is, what is the opportunity there for the courtyard to be redeveloped? And how can we potentially look at partnerships and look at. You know, look at best practices in neighboring cities, like for example. Half Moon Bay, Moon Village did a land swap with a county. And in Davie City, Midway Village also did a land swap with a county. And so I think that there are solutions out there that have been modeled that we could be thinking about. That I don't see as scoped in our current process and, and I do strongly support that direction. And in addition to that, okay, sorry, I'll, I'll pause there. Anyone else wants to comment?
I have one comment, but if you want to finish, you can go ahead.
Well, I, I guess I think that. The. What I've heard through community input is a very, is a very strong prioritization on life and safety. And, and how that needs to align with, with our bike and ped infrastructure built out. And so I do think that what, that we have, that it's, it's a valid question that we need to be asking ourselves. Does it make sense to push out? Are there opportunities to push out some of our smooth streets initiatives without incurring, you know. Out of control compounding costs while also making rapid improvements to our bike and pad. Infrastructure that will have, that can be lifesaving. I, I think that those are, those are very valid questions to be asking ourselves as a council and policymakers. So we can't do everything. We can't do everything at the same time, but we can prioritize. And I do hear a, a strong call from the community about the need to prioritize safety on our streets. And, and this is on the heels of yet another accident, a pedestrian bicycle accident. So I think that that's also an area that I would really appreciate our, our consideration. And of course, I completely agree with Councilmember Godel's about great separation for downtown. I think we all do. So those are my three.
Okay, thank you. I guess my, my comments are, I mean, I think I could go through every one of these projects and, or plans and, and talk about the virtues of how important they are. In fact, they're all important to our community. If they weren't, we wouldn't have created the plants farm in the first place. My, my emphasis or what I would like to see happen is, is having staff kind of help us put together. A priorities, prioritizing framework that would help us choose the best path forward. Because it's, it's just prioritizing this is extremely complicated. And this would, this would be helping us with decision making and helping us like understand the trade offs that we're going to have to, to, to make. We can all sit here and talk about how we think about this is going to be better, this is going to be better. But it's not until where the rubber hits the road when we're, we're actually having to place a one next to something and a two next to something. That I think we're going to need to get to, however hard it is to get it to the next level. And so if there's any, if there's any way that staff could help facilitate that process more, I think that would be extraordinarily helpful. And if, and if there's not, I think this is going to be a very messy process moving forward and maybe that's inevitable. But I'm optimistic. And I would like to ask staff if they got all the input or recommendations they wanted from the study session. Is there anything else they would like to ask the council?
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on the direction going forward because I do think we did get good direction. Thank you. I do think that we can. Put together a, a prioritization framework. I'll let Matt jump in here if he disagrees with kind of where I'm going with this. But I think. The predominance of, of, of funding that we have, that's, that's sort of discretionary. Is, is being prioritized towards street improvements. And, and the, the purpose for that is, one, that's been a council priority. But, but two, it's, it's what Matt talked about with, you know, just the cost escalation if we don't do it. And, and that in relation to other projects that, that get left by the wayside. And so to address Councilmember Lee's question, you know, could, could we defer street maintenance and do more bike ped? Absolutely. It's going to make the street maintenance take longer and be more expensive exponentially. But we can put together something for council to kind of demonstrate what that would look like financially so you could see it. I think the only other. You know. Piece of direction that I'd like to make sure we're clear on, on the go forward is, is the, the, the level of interest in. In pursue, in pursuing something with the courtyard master plan at this point, even if it's just a first step of sort of brainstorming internally. What, what potential options could be out there and bringing those to council for, for consideration? Because I mean, certainly we, we have explored. You know, the different locations for the courtyard in the past, obviously there are huge constraints there with our lack of land and then the cost of, of purchasing anything. But it, but, and so with, with sort of limited resources to do, to do our capital and do our, do actually the execute, execution of the master plan. If there's interest in exploring that, at least as a, as a first step, that's the direction I'd like to get as well. So we can get that onto our, our work plans.
Is there any opinion?
We do that once before.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was wondering that too.
I thought we had explored this once before and tried to find different locations throughout the city.
Yeah. And I, I think we should do this again. I like that idea. And I think that if it's, if there's still an opportunity there, I thought we shut it down premature. So I'd like to, I'd like to open it back up again. I think it's, it's worth exploring a little bit more.
I just don't want to do duplicative work. If you felt it was premature, I can respect that. I, I just remember though that we had gone through, I remember there was a place up near 280 we'd looked at and. I, I just remember though, that we had gone through, I remember there was a place up near two eighty we'd looked at and obviously wastewater treatment plants. I just don't want to be duplicative. Perhaps maybe we could recommend this. Can we have come forward the work that was done before so we can take a look at it? And then if there's?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Yeah, I think we can, we can come back with, with sort of taking a backwards look at, at what we've done before and where we left it. And then sort of what potential considerations there, there could be on the go-forward. I think, you know, the other aspect that we talked about a little bit was just thinking a little bit differently about how we could make things work. If, if that's at all possible, which I don't know if we explored initially. So, so yeah, we could, we could certainly do that.
And by that, do you mean that you might need less land where the corp yard is? Is that what you were suggesting? I don't.
Possibly, possibly, but I, I don't know. I mean, we, we, you know, Brad and I, this was something that we would, we would talk about every now and again about how creative we, we could get to, to make something work. And we don't know because we really haven't looked into it other than having just some really cursory discussions. So I think this would be sort of bringing some of those ideas forward, acknowledging we don't even know how feasible they are or how much interest there would be in them.
Yeah, I think we did it, if I recall, we did it as it related to the, the underground storage tank. And I think we got it there because if we had built that, then I think we would put the corp yard back on it, was what I recall. If we had put the underground storage tank, it would have been difficult to develop on top of it. I think we did it in that context. But anyway, if we can see that and if, if it does look cursory and you'd want to delve further, let's do it. But let's start there so we can see what we had. I don't want to be duplicative, you know, I'm definitely willing to explore the opportunity, certainly.
Sure.
I personally think that's a great idea. It's kind of get, opening the door, but it's not creating a bunch of extra work where it might come to the same conclusion. Are there any other thoughts from council on that idea? Here, okay. Looks like I hear, I see nodding heads. Councilmember Golville.
I just wanted, Rick's not here, so I'll take a couple of Rick's minutes. Briefly, I think when, when the general public hears council members trying to come up with ideas to raise revenue, to, to form public-private partnerships, this is the reason why. We know that there's so many important projects that we're trying to fund. So if we talk about electronic billboards, if we're talking about public-private partnerships, if we're talking about trying to build a hotel, it's because we know we need to raise revenues in order to pay for these critical pieces of our infrastructure. That's number one. Number two, if, if Rick was here, he would applaud the general public. The residents of San Mateo have shown time and time again that they are willing to tax themselves in order to pay for the important infrastructure that we need. When we passed Measure S, it was an absolute win, success. And there are so many projects that are currently being funded by Measure S because residents chose to raise the, the sales tax even during the, the serious great recession that we were in. So I, I want to applaud our residents for always being willing to step up and help pay for the things that we know we need. They should be applauded. Thanks.
Okay, any, any last comments before? Okay, I think that's it and staff is good?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's the last and only agenda item. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting and we will meet up again about fifteen minutes for our regularly meeting at seven. So I'll see everyone then. Thank you.
Thank you.